Kolleginnen und Kollegen, vereinigten Gäste und Freunde des Max-Blanc-Instituts Luxemburg! Es ist mir ein großes Vergnügen und Ehren, diese zweitägige Konferenz zu starten über die Bildung der Rechtsgerichtsverhandlung in der Gesellschaft. Öffentliche Justiz: Was verstehen wir mit diesem Konzept? Die Grundidee scheint einfach zu sein. Es geht darum, den Justizsystem und seine Leistungen zu visibel zu machen, indem sie es an die Erwartungen und Bedürfnisse der modernen Gesellschaft adaptiert wird. Öffentlichkeit des Gerichts steht nicht für den Zugang zur Justiz der Verhandlungsfälle, sondern für den Zugang des öffentlichen Gerichts zum Gerichtsraum. Ich möchte diese Konferenz beginnen, indem ich Ihnen eine kurze Abbildung der Justiz vor Ort durch den König eines Ortes in den Mittelalter in Deutschland demonstriere. Die Verfassungsgarantie des öffentlichen Gerichts enthält, dass die Verhandlung visibel ist, dass das Gerichtsraum von den Bürgerinnen und Bürgern zugänglich ist und dass die Gerichte endlich unter öffentlicher Scrutiny agieren. Hinter den Garantien von Art. 6 der Europäischen Konvention für Menschenrechte und Art. 47 des Charter für Fundamentale Rechte steht die alte Idee, dass Justiz in einem visuellen Ort in der Stadt, dem Palais de Justice, vor einem öffentlichen Publikum gegeben wird. Für offene Gründe startet der erste Panel dieser Konferenz, indem sie die Grundlagen der Verfassung dieses Themas erforscht. Vielleicht kennen Sie diesen Gebäude, es ist der vorige Reichsgericht in Leipzig. Was mich immer beeindruckt hat, ist, dass es wirklich eines der wichtigsten Gebäude war, die nach der Deutschen Unification im 19. Jahrhundert gebaut worden war. Also, erst der Reichstag, dann der Reichsgericht, dies waren die öffentlichen Gebäude. Das demonstriert, dass das Gericht in der Stadt visibel ist. Außerdem: Was bedeutet öffentliches Gericht heute in Zeiten der Internet- und IT-Revolution? Ist es genug, einfach das Gericht für eine begrenzte physische Publikum von Spectatoren zu öffnen? Jetzt sind wir in München. Dies ist ein Gericht, wo ein Kriminalverfahren zwischen Uli Hönes, dem Chef der Bayern München, stattfand und er versuchte, Taxen zu vermeiden. Und die Publikum, die Sie hier sehen, ist einfach die Öffentlichkeit des Gerichts. Sie kam zuerst, und wenn Sie zu spät waren, hatten Sie keine Chance, das Gericht zu besuchen. Wie weit sollten Gerichte ihre Verfahrensprozesse den neuen Medien öffnen? In Europa und in den Vereinigten Staaten finden verschiedene Konzepte der Öffentlichkeit. In Italien zeigen tolle Fernsehtransparenzen originelle Gerichtsverfahren, oft kriminelle Fälle. Dies ist ein Beispiel. Heute ist es möglich, die Gerichte der Europäischen Gerichts für Menschenrechte auf dem Internet zu verfolgen. Attitüden in anderen Jurisdiktionen sind völlig unterschiedlich. Vorletztes Jahr hat Deutschland eine konservative Reform der Gesetze erlaubt, die Filmung der Urteilung der höchsten Gerichte nur zu bezeichnen. Der Gesetzbuch wurde stark von vielen Gerichten contestiert, inklusive einiger der Präsidenten der federalen Gerichte, die einfach nicht wollen, zu filmen und in sozialen Medien zu zeigen. Hinter diesem Hintergrund ist ein Ziel dieser Konferenz, zu untersuchen, welches die richtige Ansicht auf Öffentlichkeit ist. In diesem Zusammenhang wird die Konferenz nicht nur über den Konzept eines öffentlichen Gerichts in Zeiten von Facebook und Twitter diskutieren, sondern auch darüber erforschen, ob es Grenzen gibt, um die Verfahrensprozesse korrekt anzuführen und die Privatschutzrechte von Parteien und Beweismitteln zu schützen. Die Panel dieser Abend werden behandeln, wie man eine moderne Gerichtsverhandlung organisieren kann in Kriminal- und Gesellschaftsverfahren. Die Öffentlichkeitskonzepte führen uns zu der allgemeinen Frage der Kommunikation und ihrer Beziehung zum Justizsystem. Wie sollten Gerichte sich in der Öffentlichkeit präsentieren? Bei Neujahrserceptionen, Presseveröffentlichungen, über Webseiten oder über Twitter? Gerichtsbüros müssen zu Besuchern offen sein, aber wäre es notwendig, Privatdinner in den Gerichtsbüros zu bieten? Wie sollten Gerichte den Öffentlichen über ihre Funktion und Aktivitäten informieren? Heute ist die Kommunikation viel mehr als einfach Online-Urteilungen zu posten. Die Kernsprecherin des rechten Herrn Strider, Seniorpräsident der Gerichtskonturen, wird am Ende des ersten Tages dieser Konferenz einen Einblick in die moderne Organisation und Kommunikation der Gerichte geben. Damen und Herren, wie wir gesehen haben, beinhaltet der Konzept einer Öffentlichkeit die Legitimität des Justizsystems und seine Rolle in der demokratischen Gesellschaft. Hier sind die Unabhängigkeit und Unverschämtheit der Gerichte notwendig, um die Qualität der Entscheidung und Justizergebnisse zu garantieren. Dementsprechend ist die Qualifikation eines Personens, der Gerichte schafft, Justiz entscheidend für die Legitimität des Justizsystems. In diesem Zusammenhang hat die Auswahl und die Aufnahme von Verfassungs- und internationalen Gerichten signifikant verändert in den letzten Jahrzehnten. Der erste Panel am Freitag wird das Thema Transparenz im Selektionsprozess der Gerichte behandeln. Öffentlichkeit würde ohne zu schauen auf die wachsende und expandierende Landschaft der Privatentscheidungsresolutions, solche als Ablation, ADR, ODR und Konsumentscheidungsresolutions, in den letzten Jahrzehnten als gleichwertig und manchmal sogar als supermode des Entschließungsverfahrens gegenüber Gerichtsverfahren gekennzeichnet. Dieser Diskurs hat die Landschaft der Verhandlung verändert und somit haben viele Entschlossen von den Gerichten aus anderen Entschließungsverfahrensbürgern entfernt. Ich zeige Ihnen dieses Foto, das ich aus dem Buch von Judith Resnick über Gerichte, Demokratie und Öffentlichkeit gemacht habe, das die federale Gerichte und Post Office in Los Angeles zeigt. Und die interessante Frage hier ist, dass es einen Diskurs über fadende Gerichte gibt. Sie haben natürlich fadende Post Offices, weil die Funktion der Post Office heute verändert ist. Die Frage ist, wie weit meine Gerichte auch von der öffentlichen Kenntnis faden können. Dies ist ein Diskurs, der mir erscheint wichtig ist. Heute ändert sich die Perspektive wieder. Indem wir den Systemen des Gesetzes als ein Ganzer rekonstruieren müssen, müssen wir den Rolle des Justizsystems betrachten. Es gibt tatsächlich eine Necessität, dass wichtige Fälle nach der Gesetzgebung entschieden werden, aber auch, dass normale Bürgerinnen und Bürger eine Chance haben, ihren Tag im Gericht zu bekommen. Auf der gleichen Zeit hat die Ablation, zumindest Investitionsablation, unter Druck angekommen, weil die Konfidentialität der Prozesse eine Misstrauen im System enthält. Der Diskurs umfasst ISDS in Investitionsablation als geheimen Justiz, der diese Frage anscheinend anspricht. Diese Fragen werden beim zweiten Panel am Freitag behandelt. Letztendlich wird die Paneldiskussion die Konferenz beenden. Diese Diskussion bringt die verschiedenen Teilnehmer zusammen, Gerichte, Rechtsstreitler, Akademiker und Journalisten. Öffentliche Justiz ist über Gerichte, ihre Funktion, ihre Bildung, ihre Standorte in der modernen Gesellschaft. Wenn wir die Bildung der Justiz behandeln, diskutieren wir ein viel breiteres, viel wichtigeres Thema. Das Rolle und die Funktion der nationalen und internationalen Gerichte in dem aktuellen gesellschaftlichen und politischen Umfeld, in dem die Autorität der Entscheidung und die Unabhängigkeit der Gerichte gefordert wird, und zwar auch unter Druck, auf beiden Seiten des Atlantikochen. Der finale Ziel dieser Konferenz ist, eine Antwort darauf zu geben, die wachsenden Herausforderungen der Unabhängigkeit der Rechtsgerichtsverhandlung und der Gesetzgebung bei popularen Bewegungen in der jetzigen Zeit. Es geht auch um die Schutz von Werten und Institutionen in der heutigen Welt. Es ist nicht notwendig, hier die Max-Blanc-Institute Luxemburg zu präsentieren, die sich als eine visible Institution geworden ist, aber es ist meine Verständlichkeit, dass diese Konferenz hier sehr gut mit ihrem Profil und mit ihrer Mission passt. Und ich bin sehr froh, dass viele Sprecher und die Publikumheit zu diesem Platz gekommen sind, um diese zweitägige Konferenz zu führen, die neue Einblicke zu einem sehr interessanten Thema liefert. Ich möchte auch meinen Dank an diejenigen aussprechen, die diese Konferenz vorbereitet haben. Saarbrücken Universität ist ein Partner dieser Konferenz heute und morgen. Ich möchte persönlich Anna Koprivica ansprechen, die ein bisschen die Mastermind hinter dem ganzen Programm ist. Sie schreibt über Transparenz in Ablation und den Konzept des öffentlichen Gerichts, also ist sie in dem Bereich, und sie hat mich sehr. Das gleiche gilt für die wunderbaren Menschen unserer Administration, die uns unterstützen hier im Institut. Dies war meine Eröffnungssprecherin. Ich möchte meine Kollegin, Co-Direktor Helen, who is Fabri, zur ersten Panel sprechen.
Damen und Herren, Kolleginnen, Kollegen, liebe Forscher, liebe Publikum! Es ist mir ein großes Vergnügen und Ehren, diese erste Panel in dieser sehr faszinierenden Konferenz zu führen. Ich bin sehr froh, wie mein Co-Direktor bereits erwähnt hat, dass diese Konferenz eine so große und hochgradige Publikum attracts. Wir beginnen die Konferenz mit diesem ersten Panel über den Recht auf öffentliches Gericht nach Art. 6 der Europäischen Konvention für Menschenrechte und Art. 47 des Charter für Fundamentale Rechte. Wir werden über die Verfassungsperspektiven sprechen. Ich erinnere etwas, das meine Kollegin nicht erwähnt hat, aber das sehr altes Justiz, dass Justiz nicht nur getan werden sollte, sondern muss getan werden. Wir finden es mit neuen Perspektiven, weil öffentliches Gericht typisch damit verbunden ist, aber können wir dies dematerialisieren und denken, dass Justiz gesehen wird, obwohl es dematerialisiert ist? Also, gesehen werden sollte getan werden. Wir haben drei distinguished Sprecher, um dieses Thema zu diskutieren. Zuerst hat der Advocate General Spuna das Thema eingeführt und seine Gedanken an die Kommentare von Angelika Andersberger und Andreas Paulus. Advocate General Spuna, Angelika Andersberger und Andreas Paulus alle teilen eine dualen Position, die sie alle sind Gerichte. Advocate General des Gerichts für Justiz der Europäischen Union, Angelika Andersberger ist Gerichts- und Vizepräsident der Europäischen Gerichts für Menschenrechte, und Andreas Paulus ist Gerichts- und Verfassungsgerichtsminister der Deutschen Union. Aber sie sind auch Akademiker und behalten Positionen an der Katowice Universität für Herrn Advocate General Spuna, Kohlen Universität für Angelika Andersberger und die Universität Gottingen für Andreas Paulus. Wir können also ein sehr rich und lebendiges Diskurs erwarten, weil sie diese Perspektiven aus ihrer Erfahrung mixen. Ohne länger zu warten, lasse ich den Platz dem Advocate General Spuna und seinen Kommentariern. Danke.
Guten Abend. Ich möchte zunächst die Organisator für die Veranstaltung danken, die mich heute zur Konferenz gefördert haben. In diesem Fall möchte ich Herrn Professor Ruiz Fabri und Herrn Professor Hess danken. Ich bin sicher, dass wir eine erfolgreiche Diskussion haben werden. Ich bin davon bestimmt, dass ich heute den Raum in eine mehr erklärte Art verlassen werde, als ich eingetreten bin. Die Begriffe Öffentlichkeitsjustiz, wie die generelle Begriffe Öffentlichkeit, Transparenz, Verantwortung sind bereits selbstverständlich, in dem Sinne, dass sie die gewünschten Objektive bestehen. Nach allem, wer ist gegen Öffentlichkeitsjustiz, Öffentlichkeit, Transparenz, Verantwortung? Meine Intervention, meine introductory intervention heute ist zur Verfassungsperspektive unter Art. 6 der Konvention und Art. 47 des Charter zur Recht auf öffentliches Gericht devoted. Ich werde die Scherm und die Kontexte dieser Rechte untersuchen, unter diesen beiden Instrumenten. Bevor ich zu Art. 6 des Charter und zu Art. 47 der Konvention, Art. 47 des Charter , halte es für hilfreich, diese Provisions in die breitere Bildung in ihre entsprechenden Gesetzesordnungen zu setzen. Ich beginne mit der Konvention, und sie wechseln zu den Gesetzesordnungen der Europäischen Union. Die Konvention für die Schutz der Menschenrechte und Fundamentale Freiheiten, verzeichnet in Rom am 4. November 1950, zusammen mit den folgenden Protokollen ist ein Menschenrechtekatalog unter internationalem Gesetz, der zu 47 Mitgliedstaaten der Europäischen Konzession führt. Es besteht die Flagge dieser Organisation. Es ist unbedingt der most prominentale und operationalen Konvention der mehr als 200 Konventionen, elaboriert unter der Ausbeutung der Europäischen Konzession. Seine Stärke liegt nicht wenig darin, dass sie von der Europäischen Gerichts für Menschenrechte geschützt und geschützt wird, was wir wissen, ein juristisches Monitoring mechanismus, das von Einwilligungen gesteuert kann. Dies ist etwas sehr außergewöhnliches in öffentlich-internationalalem Gesetz durch individuelle Anklagen. In dieser Konvention, Art. 6 spielt eine prominentale Rolle, nicht die prominenteste. Zu dem ersten Paragrafen dieser Provision, in der Entscheidung für seine Gesellschaftlichen Rechte und Pflichten oder für alle kriminellen Anklagen gegen ihn, ist jeder Eintritt und öffentliches Gericht innerhalb einer reasonable Zeit durch ein unabhängiges und unverschämtheitisches Gericht, das von Gesetz entstanden ist. Wie wir in einem detaillierten Moment sehen werden, hat die Europäische Gerichts für Menschenrechte klar Konturen gegeben, durch einen abgegrenzten Gesetzesrecht. Wie bekannt ist, besteht die Europäische Union ein Union von Gesetz, basierend auf der Gesetzgebung, der Reichsgemeinschaft in der Terminologie des ersten Präsidenten der Europäischen Kommission, Walter Halstein. Dies bedeutet, dass alle seine Aktionen auf eine Gesetz- und Gesetzgebungsbasis basieren und dass sie durch unabhängige juristische Institutionen überprüft werden können. Wie für die Lettre, Art. 19, § 1 der Vertrag zur Europäischen Union, verpflichtet das Gericht für die Überprüfung und Überwirkung des Vertrages, der Gesetz ist beobachtet. Die gleiche Provision verpflichtet die EU-Mitgliedstaaten, Medikamente zu bereitstellen, die effektive Gesetzgehalt in den Bereichen, die von der Union gesetzt werden. Zusammen mit Art. 47 des Charter, diese Provision modifiziert den Prinzipien von effektiver Gesetzgehalt oder Recht auf effektive juristische Behandlung. Dieser Prinzip ist ein allgemeiner Prinzip von EU-Gesetz. Art. 47 ist außerdem Teil eines exhaustiven Fundamentale Rechtekatalog, der von Art. 51 des Charter ausgeführt wird, wie vom Gericht für Justiz interpretiert wird, innerhalb der Scherm der Überwirkung von EU-Gesetz, ob es durch die EU-Institutionen und in bestimmten Fällen durch die Mitgliedstaaten gesetzt wird. Der Recht auf eine effektive juristische Behandlung ist ein allgemeiner Prinzip von Gesetz, der im Kontext des multiplenverfassungs systems der EU existiert. Ich erinnere nicht an die Wörter von Art. 47 des Charter, aber es ist offensichtlich, dass diese Provision eine ganze Reihe von Prozeduralrechten enthält, von all encompassing allgemeinem Prinzip in Form des Rechts auf eine effektive Behandlung vor einem Gericht bis zu technischen Problemen wie Gesetzgehalt. Eines dieser Rechte dieser Reihe ist der Erwerb eines öffentlichen Gerichts. Die Beziehung zwischen Art. 6 der Konvention und Art. 47 des Charter ist folgender: Teil von Art. 47, der heute unser Interesse hat, das heißt, dass sein zweites Paragrafen auf Art. 6 der Konvention basiert, und tatsächlich, nach den offiziellen, nicht bindenden, aber trotzdem instructive Erklärungen, die zu dem Charter gehören, ist das erste Paragrafen von Art. 47 auf Art. 13 der Konvention, während das zweite Paragrafen von Art. 47 des Charter zu Art. 6, § 1 der Konvention entspricht. Als Folge kann der Gesetzesrecht, entwickelt durch die Europäische Gerichts für Menschenrechte, bezüglich Art. 6, § 1, zu Art. 47, § 2 des Charter übersetzt werden. Dies wurde von Art. 52, § 3 des Charter, bestätigt, nach dem, dass, so weit wie möglich, das Charter enthält Rechte, die zu Rechten, die von der Konvention gewährleistet werden, der Bedeutung und Scherm dieser Rechte die gleiche sein soll, wie die von der Konvention gesetzt werden. Außerdem können die Standards, die von Art. 6, § 1 der Konvention erworben werden, in Art. 47, § 2 des Charter nicht unterbrochen werden, weil Art. 52, § 3 des Charter fortsetzt, dass dieses Artikel nicht die Union Gesetz bietet, die eine viel größere Schutz bietet. Lassen wir uns an die Bedeutung und Scherm des Rechts auf öffentliches Gericht zurückführen. Die Rationale dieses Rechts wurde vom Europäischen Gericht für Menschenrechte in der Äußerung des Fall so beschrieben: Der öffentliche Charakter der Prozesse schützt Verhandlungsfälle gegen die Beherrschung der Justiz im Geheimnis, ohne öffentliche Scrutiny. Es ist auch eines der Mittel, durch das die Vertrauen in die Gerichte erhalten werden. Durch die Schaffung der Beherrschung der Justiz zu visibel zu machen, contributes Öffentlichkeit zum Erzielen des Ziele von Art. 6, § 1, nämlich eines dritten Prozesses, der eine von den fundamentalen Prinzipien einer demokratischen Gesellschaft ist, was der Bedeutung der Konvention entspricht. Öffentlichkeit ist dann als eine Garantie der Fairness des Prozesses angesehen. Wieder einmal, in den Worten der Europäischen Gerichts für Menschenrechte, der Objekt, der durch die Anforderung eines öffentlichen Gerichts gefordert wird, ist, die Schutz der Rechtsgerichtsverhandlung durch den Öffentlichen zu schützen, mit Blick auf die Sicherheit der Rechte eines dritten Prozesses. Um zu entscheiden, ob es eine öffentliches Gericht gab, nimmt die Europäische Gericht für Menschenrechte die Prozesse als ein Ganzer an. Daher, zum Beispiel, in der Absenz eines öffentlichen Gerichts über Anfehlung oder Kassierung, entsteht ein Problem unter Art. 6, § 1 der Konvention, nur wenn der Anfehlungswirt ein bestimmtes Problem entscheidet. Dies ist natürlich nicht der Fall im Gesetzgesetz, wo der Anfehlungswirt oder Kassierungswirt eine kontrollierende Rolle spielt, in dem Sinne, dass die Entscheidungen früherer Gerichte nur auf Punkten des Gesetzes übertragen werden können, die eine weitere Gerichtsverhandlung in der Gerichtsbesitzung benötigen. Incidentally, gibt es zwei Aspekte des Gerichts, die die Recht auf öffentliches Gericht beschränken, ob die Prozesse öffentlich zugänglich sind und ob es eine ordentliche Gerichte gibt, bei der der Antraggeber den Gerichtsverband ansprechen kann. Der Recht auf öffentliches Gericht ist nicht absolut. Zuerst können die Parteien das Recht ihrer eigenen Freiwilligkeit weisen, entweder expressiv oder tacit, wenn die Weise, die eine equivocal ist, erfüllt wird, durch mindestens Sicherheitsmaßnahmen, die mit ihrer Bedeutung zusammenhängen, und nicht gegen ein wichtiges öffentliches Interesse. Dies ist das, was das Gericht für Justiz in der Entscheidung von Meloni gehalten hat. Zweitens enthält Art. 6, § 1 der Konvention eine Liste von Einschränkungen zum Recht auf öffentliches Gericht auf der Grundlage öffentlicher Politik, nationaler Sicherheit, Schutz von Jugend, Privatschutz oder mehr generell, wenn es strikt in den Interessen der Justiz notwendig ist. Trotzdem sind diese Ausnahmen, wie alle Ausnahmen zu einem allgemeinen Gesetz, sehr eng verankert. Unter welchen Bedingungen kann deswegen ein öffentliches Gericht behandelt werden? Hier ist der Reppenurteil der Europäischen Gerichts für Menschenrechte sehr instructiv. Herr Reppen, der nach einer vorherigen Gefestigung einen Prisontermin hatte, gefährdet von einem Prisonwürde, aufgrund dessen kriminelle Prozesse gegen ihn eingesetzt wurden. Eines der Austrian Gerichte entschied, das Gericht in der Prison zu halten. Es setzte eine Datum für das Prozess und schickte eine Gerichtsliste, die enthalten war, die Datum und das Platz des Gerichts, sowie das Name der Prison, in der das Gericht gehalten werden sollte. Subsequent, sitte der Regionalgericht mit einem einzigen Gericht, hatte ein Gericht in der Nähe der Prison. Nach den Minuten des Gerichts war es öffentlich. Nach dem Gericht verfesserte der Regionalgericht den Antraggeber, und ein Anfehlungshof vor dem Linz-Gerichtshof in einem öffentlichen Gericht. Die Europäische Gerichts für Menschenrechte behauptete, dass, obwohl die Öffentlichkeit des Gerichts nicht formal ausgeschlossen war, kann die Konvention in Wirklichkeit kontrastieren, wie ein Gesetzgehalt. Es fortsetzte, dass das Prozess nur, wenn der Öffentliche Zugang zu Informationen über seine Datum, Platz und wenn das Platz leicht zugänglich ist, für den Öffentlichen zugänglich ist. Wenn ein Prozess in der Prison stattfindet, ist der Staat unter einer Pflicht, compensative Maßnahmen zu ergreifen, um sicherzustellen, dass der Öffentliche und die Medien beide über das Platz des Gerichts informiert sind und einen effektiven Zugang erlauben. Solche compensative Maßnahmen hatten in der Sache Austriens nicht getragen. Außerdem, und wir sprechen von den Einschränkungen, sah das Gericht nicht an, eine mögliche Behauptung der Scrutiny, die unter Art. 6, § 1 steht. Letztendlich untersuchte das Gericht, ob die Lohnlosigkeit erstens durch ein öffentliches Gerichtsverfahren verhindert wurde, und es fand heraus, dass das nicht der Fall war. Alle Beweise sollten im Prinzip in der Präsenz der Verantwortlichen in einem öffentlichen Gericht mit Blick auf adversale Argumente geschaffen werden. Given the tremendous effect that the lack of public hearing before the trial court could have on the fairness of the proceedings, the absence of publicity could be remedied by anything other than a complete rehearing before the appellate court, which had not been the case at issue. Why is the right to public hearing not an absolute? An oral hearing may not be required, where there are no issues of credibility or contested facts, which would necessitate the oral presentation of evidence. The European Court of Human Rights allows for the possibility to proceed without a hearing, when the proceedings are exclusively legal or highly technical. As a rule of thumb, it is more lenient when it comes to civil proceedings. Furthermore, the need to protect professional confidentiality can justify imposing limitations, as can the protection of children. Regarding the meaning and scope of the right to public hearing, we can therefore summarize at this stage that proceedings without a public hearing are in violation of this right. The exceptions to this right are narrowly construed. And it is difficult to remedy a situation in which public hearing has not taken place. Now let me turn to another issue, that of course will be discussed in this conference, and it was already mentioned by Professor Hess in his introductory remarks, TV or Internet Livestreaming in the courtroom. I would like to address the meaning of the term "public". Here, I would like to look at the question of TV or live streaming. It is well known in some jurisdictions such a practice is employed. A very notable example is the European Court of Human Rights, which has the practice of filming high-profile cases and placing them online. This allows the interested public to follow cases firsthand. For some people, it may constitute a Saturday night pastime. Human rights can be sometimes even more exciting than, let's say, a house of cards. But let us get serious again. The majority of jurisdictions do not allow for TV in the courtroom. Certainly, this is the case of the Court of Justice of the European Union, to which I will turn in a minute. Looking at examples on the national level, the German Constitutional Court has clear stance on this matter. Under the German Courts Constitution Act, the hearing before the adjudicating court, including the pronouncement of judgments and rulings, shall be public. Audio and television or radio recordings, as well as audio and film recordings intended for public presentation or for publication of their content, shall be inadmissible. This provision has been challenged in the context of constitutional complaints alleging the infringement of the fundamental rights to broadcast. The two cases issued were high-profile, in that they concerned respectively a trial against former members of the East German Politbüro and proceedings about the legality of the crucifix in public buildings. Both of these are incidentally matters which came before the Straßburg Court. It was alleged that a public hearing includes a broadcast and TV public. It was alleged that a public hearing includes a broadcast and TV public. The German Constitutional Court did not agree with such an approach and held the provision in question to be constitutional. In doing so, it specifically referred to Article six of the Convention. The court held in particular that proceedings take place in public but not for the public, and that the publicity which was protected was that of public in the courtroom. In a later case, the German Constitutional Court marginally loosened its jurisprudence in the sense that it allowed for TV cameras in the courtroom before and after proceedings and during pauses, but not during proceedings proper. And the German law, therefore, banning TV from courtroom during proceedings does not run counter Article six of the Convention. And to my knowledge, most states go for this option, which I would submit to is within the confines of the right to a public hearing, but I will come to this point later in my conclusion. Public hearings before the Court of Justice, the hearings that the Court of Justice are public, and I would limit myself to just some basic information about the publicity in the Court of Justice. A hearing, in principle, we have a hearing, but according to Article seventy six of the Court's rule of procedure, a hearing can be dispensed of if the court considers being sufficiently informed on the basis of the written pleadings and observations lodged during the written procedure. Moreover, the same provision invites the parties to the proceedings and, in the case of preliminary reference, interested persons to submit a reasoned request for a hearing. In practice, this means the following: if a party or an interested person submits a reasoned request for a hearing, a hearing will normally take place. And even if no such request is submitted, in many cases, the court will prefer to hold a hearing. As a consequence, only a minority of cases is proceeded and judged without a hearing. According to the practice of the court, a hearing is arranged by the court whenever it is likely to contribute to a better understanding of the case and the issues raised by it. I must admit that this is the approach I take myself when I propose, together with the Judge Raporter of a case, to the court whether or not we should have a hearing. But regarding the situation at the Court of Justice, I would submit that the situation is more than satisfactory vis-à-vis the principle of Article six, Article forty seven. In particular, regarding the preliminary ruling procedure, it should not be forgotten that this procedure constitutes a dialogue between judges in which the parties to the made proceedings play a different role than at the national level. Their contribution is first and foremost of the information to the court on the legal and factual backgrounds at national level, and in the main proceedings at the national level, a sufficient level of publicity is certainly ensured. Let me conclude by submitting the question of open justice in the context of the need to have a TV of live streaming in a courtroom. What are the pros and cons? We are all in favor of open justice. There is no doubt that a public hearing contributes to the proper administration of justice. It constitutes a crucial element of the procedure from the point of view of the parties and from the point of view of judges. The question remains: how far should the transparency go? Does the live streaming of all judicial hearings and the subsequent debate involving all social media really contribute to the quality of a public debate? We all believe in transparency. Nevertheless, we all know that at least some of judicial activities should be excluded from the scope of transparency. In this context, I would like to refer to the book of Ivan Kastev, an English political scientist of Bulgarian origin. He, three years ago, published a book, “In Mistrust We Trust”. Even if we do not share his views, we should bear in mind his arguments against full transparency. And that would be, to some extent, a blot on the landscape. And I would like to quote some paragraphs, some sentences of his book. He says, for example, that “in contrast to those advocates who believe that a politics of full disclosure improves the quality of public debate, I think that injections of huge flows of information make public conversation more complicated, shifting the focus away from the moral competence of the citizens to his expertise in one or another area. Contrary to the expectations of the transparency movement, that full disclosure of government information or court information will make public discourse even more rational and less paranoid, my argument is that a focus on transparency only fuel conspiracy theories. The rise of the transparency movement has the potential to remake democratic politics, but we should be sure that we are all in agreement as to the direction of the change. Is the transparency movement capable of restoring trust in democratic institutions, courts as well? Or is it alternatively going to make mistrust the official idiom of democracy?” I shall leave you with these thoughts and look forward to the discussion. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you so much for this provocation, if I can put it like that. I think we all agree that it cannot be transparency for the sake of transparency, but at the same time, we have to reflect on the purpose of public hearings and the addresses also of these public hearings. I was struck by the fact that you mentioned that the court doesn't hold hearings when it's not useful to increase the quality of the judicial debate, but maybe there are other addresses there which are not taken into account in this, some silent addresses, nevertheless. So, I don't know, but I leave this to comment by our other speakers, maybe Angelika, your choice.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you to the first speaker. Thank you for the invitation to you, and I'm very happy to be here and to discuss these issues with you. We were already mentioned as an example. I don't know if you're a bad example or a good example, we'll see in the discussion. I was asked to comment, so I don't have a full speech, but just some ideas. And of course, we are close in having these two articles which are closely linked together, so I just add some aspects. When we talk about open justice, we take from our perspective, we just take out the human rights perspective. So of all what is open justice, some part is sort of condensed as a human right. And that is actually only a small part, I would say, because justice starts at a sort of a preparatory stage in criminal investigation, in preparation of a claim is being brought to a court. We start working, and nobody sees anything, that we start working on the claim as judges. So this first phase is completely out. Then we have now the phase we are talking about, when we expose the facts and the law to the public. That is a part, a sort of a spotlight on one part of the procedure. But that's not all. We continue working on the case, we deliberate, we retreat. And as you know, there are some jurisdictions where they deliberate in public, so like in Switzerland, for example. We wouldn't do that. We have, on the contrary, we have an oath where we say that we will keep secret all deliberations. So this part is deliberately secret of the third part, the third phase of this finding a just result coming to justice. And now, once again, it's interesting, because these deliberations, they are secret in all our courts, but they are more secret in Luxembourg, because we have the right to write dissenting opinions. And when we write dissenting opinions, we somehow give out, we somehow tell the public what we think or what we have thought. Of course, we don't say that we use these words in deliberations, but it's quite easy or you can expect that it's more or less what we have been discussing. So there, it's half-half. On the one hand, we are bound by our oath; on the other hand, in Strasbourg, it's even expected to write a dissenting opinion if you don't share the opinion, whereas in Carlsberg they are more reluctant. There is no such expectation as there is in Strasbourg. And then we have the next phase, the delivery of the judgment, where once again we go into the spotlight, and then we have the publication. So we have to see it all as a process, and I would say there are some spotlights on some parts. So if we now take this idea of open justice, I would say open justice only, some parts are taken as a human right to know what's happening, only some parts, only some parts of the procedure. The second restriction is in my jurisdiction, so the European Court of Human Rights. The restriction is that we don't consider, we don't give this guarantee of Article six to all rights. We talk about civil rights and criminal rights. This restriction is not in the Charter, but for us it's a very important restriction, because we have, over the years, we have been expanding on the interpretation of what is civil and what is criminal, but still there are quite a lot of rights which are outside. So we don't have these fair guarantees of a hearing for financial disputes, for election disputes, and for asylum cases. So they are just out, they cannot come to us under Article six. And the third, and that's what you mentioned, the third restriction of the human rights guarantee, although the text is absolute. We have no restrictions in the text as such when we say everyone is entitled to a fair and public hearing. That is basically, there should be a hearing, there's not written, a hearing may be dispensed off. It's only, the public may be dispensed off, but still, you quoted it, we say it's not absolute, it has to be restricted. And the third sort of restriction of the open justice is that we always have to weigh different human rights position in this context. We have not only Article six, we also have Article eight, right to privacy, and on the other hand, we have Article six reinforced by Article ten, access to information. So all these journalists coming to our court and demanding the right to be present, the right to hear, they can rely on Article ten. And so we have to see these three articles together, and the court has stated it explicitly concerning the access of the press. I just quote this duty, the duty to impart information and ideas on all matters of public interest. This duty extends to the reporting and commenting on court proceedings, which contribute to their publicity, and are thus consonant with a requirement under Article six one of the Convention that hearings be public. So ten and six are sort of mutually reinforcing. And at the same time, the courses, however, the court has also underlined that the press must not overstep certain bounds regarding in particular the protection of the right to privacy of accused persons in criminal proceedings and the presumption of innocence. So that is the spectrum of the human rights approach on the European level. Now, more specifically, when we talk about the necessity or the right to hold a hearing, for our court, we have two perspectives. One is our control function of what the national courts are doing, and the other one is to look at ourselves, what we are doing, if we are living up to our own demands. And as you all know, and you all are happy to criticize us, quite often we don't live up to our standards. So the best example, of course, is length of proceedings. We criticize everybody for doing something that is even better than what we do ourselves, and no comment anymore on that. That's as it is. But it's also an issue here, right to a public hearing. We have adopted, we have just presented our statistics, about 70,000 judicial decisions last year. We had about twenty-five to twenty-seven hearings. Not quite all, I guess. There is a huge discrepancy between what we decide and what we show, what is public in the end. So these are the two perspectives I want to, I just want to mention, and I will come back to the second perspective in a minute. So I don't have to go into more details, I just add something on what you referred about our jurisprudence. Yes, it's not absolute, that's true, and as you said, it's only, there are exceptions for legal and highly technical questions. And there is an important point, because the court said rule and exception is not about frequency. So if we have hundreds of thousands of technical social security cases, it can become the rule not to have a hearing, because they are all legal and technical. So the court explicitly said that it's not necessary to look at the statistics, what is the rule and the exception, that it's possible to dispense more often from a hearing because it's just technical and a legal question. And we accept, the court accepts, the argument efficiency and economy. So if it's not necessary, efficiency and economy can be an argument. And also the other demand in Article six, length of proceedings, because if you have a hearing, it takes a long time, and it can delay the proceedings, so you have a tension between short proceedings and allowing a hearing. And the second point is, the first, legal and technical, and the other one is on which level you are of the proceedings and what is the specific function. So if you have, for example, leave to appeal proceedings or decision on interim measures, it's a different situation, and you can have an exception because it's necessary for the specific procedure. When we decide about violations of Article six right to a hearing, we also take into account if the courts reason their decision why they don't grant a hearing, and if they have the possibility to put forward their arguments in writing. That is very important for these legal and technical questions. So violations can be found when there is no hearing held at all, or when there are no reasons given for not holding a hearing, or also, as you said, a lack of notification when people don't know when the hearing will take place. The second part of your interpretation of right to a hearing was now public, so the access of the public, and there, of course, we have these, as you said, narrowly interpreted exceptions, and the main argument is always proportionality. We have quite a lot of case law where the court said, okay, for example, in a Russian case, they argued, well, we have classified information, that's why we exclude the public. The court argued, well, if you have classified information, that may be an argument, but then you have to balance, you have to look very concretely what is at stake, and it's not enough just to say classified information, you are outside. And the same is with these public order issues. Also in Russian case, they said there were 100,000 claimants, but there were only 25 who wanted to come to the courtroom. So it's disproportionate to exclude them. And the same applies for the restriction concerning juveniles. It's always, the court looks really always at the concrete circumstances and never allows for a very general exclusion, but in the concrete case, if it's necessary. So that is our jurisprudence. Now, we ourselves, what is with our standards? As I said, we have hearings, our hearings are the exception. You said you are doing better, I perfectly accept. For us, hearings are the exception. There's no regulation in the Convention. In the rules of the court, we say the chamber and the grand chamber may decide, so we give ourselves full discretion. We may decide if we consider that the discharge of our functions under the Convention so requires. requires. So it's a very broad clause if we think that it, the discharge of our functions so requires. And the practice is almost never to have hearings in chamber cases and almost always to have hearings in grand chamber cases. And that's why we have every second week a grand chamber case, and that's why we add up to about twenty-five, twenty-eight grand chamber cases. We do have hearings in chamber cases, like we had in the Timoshenko case, where we thought it's, it's a very important issue to discuss. It's also a question, if we think it goes to the grand chamber, then two hearings are not very efficient, but in especially important cases, we do have a hearing in the chamber. On the other hand, we do have, we dispense with a hearing on the grand chamber, we had one case where we had to calculate the six months period for bringing in a complaint. That's not interesting for the public. So that exists as well. You look at the watch already? No? Okay, fine. Okay, so a grand chamber, we are, we, we do have the hearings, but now what justifies that we as a court take a completely different approach from what we expect national courts to do? I think it's really our function as a constitutional court, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't function, we just couldn't function if we had a hearing in all our seventy thousand cases. That's, that's really obvious, but it's also, it's not only a question of, a pragmatic question, but also a question of our function, that we come in after the case has already been openly debated on the national level, and we have to pick out just some cases too, which are especially controversial, and these are the grand chamber cases where we think it's helpful to, to have an open debate on that. But I admit that if we applied our own standards, really to us, we would have more cases, because we do have cases where evidence is important, where we do not really know in the end what has happened, and we just play around with presumptions and, and, but European, probably European jurisprudence had there a different, a different function. And so now the question of the publicity of our hearings, when we are public, we are really public, that is true, and I wonder, perhaps we are a bit boring, that's why it's not, it's not so controversial, because I was, I was surprised, I looked, I looked up, where is it, where, where the rule about it, that it's filmed and then put on internet, it's recorded and then put on internet, and I didn't find a rule. And then I asked, I didn't find anything, and then I asked my colleagues who are responsible for the grand chamber, I said, where have you, what the regulation, and they said, there is none. And then I said, okay, when has it started? Yeah, it has started in two thousand and seven, it was just Irish money being paid for that, and the president Costa who liked it. And I thought, okay, so here you are. I think it's a completely pragmatic approach, the idea to open up. We have, I don't see really so many human rights issues of, as I said before, Article Eight, involved, because usually we have the government on the one side, we have the applicant's lawyers on the other side. The applicant is free to come, but usually they don't come, and, and we have the judges, we are all professionals, so we, we accept being filmed from the beginning to the end. You have asked very good questions about, is it good, is it not good? I think it's true, the public interest depends a bit on the celebrities coming. So just last week, we had the case of Navalny, and Navalny, it was just the Wednesday before, on Saturday he announced his nationwide marches, and of course he used this information in the courtroom, and we had also Mr. Perincek, who had, who was accused of denying the Armenian genocide, who came himself. So there, indeed, we, we did have a lot of, of media interest, Mr. Berlusconi did not come, so there was less media interest. I mean, that might, that might influence people to view, but up to now, I think it was, it was good for our court to be that open, and I have not really heard so many negative statements about our openness. Just for ending, I want to give you two examples where we ourselves in our, in our daily practice discussed our openness or the consequences of our openness, or how open we should be. One is this Perincek case, this Perincek case was a very famous case about, against Switzerland, about a Turkish politician who denied the genocide of the Armenians, and the question was if his, his speech is protected by freedom of speech, and Armenia was a third-party intervener, and I don't remember if Turkey was a third-party intervener, Armenia was a third-party intervener, and the Swiss government asked the public to be excluded, because they were afraid, because of the sensitivity of the question, that there might be some disorder. And the court said, no, we, we include the public. So we said, no, that's not sufficient, that it's such a, an issue where there might be political emotions, we are open. And the other issue out of our court praxis, which, which I found interesting in the, in the context of open justice, was, you know, we have, as I said, we have the right to write dissenting opinions, and we have the national judge who takes part in the chamber judgment and in the grand chamber judgment, because, because of the role of the national judge as it's defined in our convention. And we now had an issue that a case was brought from the chamber to the grand chamber, one of the judges had written a clear dissenting opinion, and now one of the governments, it's an interstate case, one of the governments said, this judge is biased, because he had been open, as it's our rule, he had written the dissent, and then there was a claim of bias because he had already taken a position in the case. So that was an issue where openness, or we could see the consequences of what it means when judges are open. With that, I would, I would like to stop my comment, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, both to Ellen and Burkhard, whom I know for a long time, and I really find, think you have a wonderful building here, and I'm sure you have also wonderful people, and you have organized that conference, and thank you very much for, General Spooner and Angelica Nussberger, for those talks, and you have said almost everything already, so I have a good role in picking and choosing my topics. But let me start by saying, I think there is an important distinction, and you have made it actually, both, between international and constitutional courts on the one hand, and I think there we are indeed more or less in one boat, and regular courts on the other. And of course, we are going to discuss regular courts in the afternoon later on, but I think the function is a little bit different, and that also means that if we are able to make broad statements about TV presence, about publicness, and so on, I think at the front, as my national colleagues would call, probably call it, things look a little bit differently. There is, on the one hand, of course, as our court has called it, the principle of openness in a democracy, open justice, the Rechtsstaat, the rule of law principle, which also requires that what judges and courts do is public, at least as far as the results, and also as the elements of decision are concerned. So that is one side, and that's a very important one. But on the other, and you have mentioned it, there are considerations of privacy, of protection of young people, there is a problem of this effect of being suddenly subject to public deliberation. So if you, if you have a libel case, for instance, you have in fact already lost when you have started it. Think of the Caroline cases, as we call them in Germany, or von Hannover cases in Strasbourg. I mean, that was a very courageous step of the princes, really we have to say that, because for herself, to be, to be, to remain private, she should have not said anything, and left things as they are, maybe complained personally to some people she knew in the media, but not really, to be, to be away from public eye, she should have kept quiet rather than go to court, because going to court means you are exposed. Or the first human rights case of the European Court of Justice, Mr. Staudt, wanted to be, remain private, and now, even now, even fifty years later, he is still mentioned, because he brought a case and he complained about not having remained private. So these risks to private parties need to be taken into account. So publicity is not always good, neither for the courts nor for the people concerned. So I think indeed, even here also, we have to do some balancing. We have to do some balancing for the traditional publicness, which is a present public, which is court proceedings being open, as far as they exist, are open to the public and not only to the private parties. And that is maybe also an advantage, actually, of public courts compared to arbitration, that what public courts are doing is by definition public, and the interests of the public play a role, and that has also to do with the presence of the public in the room, that is therefore the protection maybe of the parties, but it is also the interest of the public which is involved and which plays a role there. So I think that is the scenery which we are faced with in, in ordinary proceedings. And then comes, of course, TV and twittering and so on. In Germany, I must tell you, there's a strong penchant against court TV, as, that is a debate we had twenty years ago, thirty years ago, coming, of course, from the United States. O.J. Simpson trial is, of course, in all of our, of those, of my age at least, it's in our minds still. And nobody claims that in the Facebook and Twitter world, things have become better. The problematik is much bigger than that, you have this immediate comment function, so actually the public becomes part of the trial, and then suddenly publicists can also turn against the private parties involved, and privacy interests get even more important than they have been with regard to court TV. So that is, explains the reluctance of lots of my colleagues before, faced with too much publicity. Nevertheless, there has been a new law in Germany, so I spin the things a little bit further than the advocate general, which has opened up even ordinary court proceedings according to the model which the constitutional court has practiced, and it was a little bit in what Angelica Nussberger just has described. For instance, we had a special room for the press and for, for journalists, in which the, the sound of the proceedings was transferred to. Actually, we learned in the debate on the new law that this was a practice which was dubious, actually, if you applied the rules on, the rules on the general, on general trials strictly. So now it has been legalized, codified, let's say, not legalized, it was legal, we would claim all along, but it was codified by the legislature, and the legislature has also codified that the Supreme Courts, we have, German court system is difficult, so we have several Supreme Courts for several areas, ordinary Supreme Court and Federal Court of Justice, and then we have a federal administrative court, a federal total court, federal labor court, federal finance court. So they have now also the possibility to open up the pronouncement of the judgment and also the beginning of the public hearing. They don't go so far as the constitutional court goes nowadays, if we have decided to have a public hearing, then the president of the court, or the vice president, the head of the chamber, is, deciding chamber, is going to give a short introduction to the case, sometimes also the rapporteur is joining in, and then the parties are called and presented, and then the public is still in the room, in the courtroom, but not anymore present in, in TV. It's also interesting that even, although we have a channel for documentation, they only carry the most important cases, and most of the cases, one has to say, where these considerations of protecting private parties, protecting privacies are not very important or not present at all, at all. So this is a longstanding practice of the, of the constitutional court, which has now been codified for all superior courts in Germany. Nevertheless, even that law was very much criticized in, by the professional judges, because they wanted themselves not be in the public, and if we look at the current debate with enemies of the people in, in the United Kingdom, we see another danger of too much TV cameras, if you like, it becomes personal. And the continental tradition has it that justice is not something very personal, but it is a court, who makes the decision. And that's why, for instance, in Germany, the constitutional court is the only court in which we allow for dissenting opinions, because that personalizes what the court is doing. That may be an advantage, it is maybe more, more open and more transparent and more true to what actually justice is, it's not only an objective thing, it has to do with the people who administer, are administering it, but it has a danger, the personalization regarding the authority of the courts and regarding the possibility of attacking judges if you do not have enough arguments for attacking the judgment itself, when you go against the judges, that I think is a phenomenon we have to take into account. So let, let me now speak on the practice of my own court, I said already something about TV cameras, and then, of course, the, our decisions on public hearings, Angelica has alluded to, we are quite similar actually to the European Court of Human Rights, except that we do not have chambers and plenary judgments. We have a plenary, but it has always deliberates in secret and puts then forward its decisions. So and our norm indeed, in, if you look at the theory in our organic law, it says that the rule is that, that the proceedings, public hearings are public, but then we have an exception for the most, for the, for the largest amount of cases we have, that is for individual complaints, for individual complaints, the proceedings of the chamber, of the chambers, or sub-chambers, as you have translated probably into English, are not public, because this is a written procedure, and actually we could not deal with our, depends on what you count, ten thousand or seven thousand cases, seven thousand cases coming to, between six and seven thousand cases coming each years, each year to at least those three judges of those sub-chambers, we couldn't deal with them, of course, by having a public deliberation. Of course, you could say the legislature could change that, and then we would have a federal constitutional court which would look similar to the federal Supreme Court, which is not only two senators, but maybe ten, twelve, or fifteen, but that would not help very much constitutional adjudication, it was, of course, becoming much more amorphous, and nobody is, probably likes this, this idea. So actually, we have to be in practice, we can't have public hearings, but those public hearings are held after the short introduction in the room, everybody is public, but you do not put them out by streaming or less, even less so by TV. Can these things remain so? That is a good question, and I would approach this question from two angles. The first is one regarding to what the advocate general has said, could it be the case that after the Charter of Fundamental Rights has somewhat removed the limitations, at least in the wording of the Charter, which the European Court of Human Rights has put forward, could it influence the proceedings of national courts? Of course, you know that according to the German Constitutional Court, the space for the European Court of Justice is much more limited than the Court of Justice thinks it itself, much more, more, a little bit more limited, it might be more correct, but in fact, the Charter only applies in those, in those cases regarding European institutions on the one hand, and the implementation of European Union law by national courts on the other. But requirements of the court towards those cases which involve European Union law would, of course, in a way travel to what national courts do in other cases, which may not have a European Union aspect to it. So actually, there could be such a broadening of publicity and of some, even forcing more public, not only in the room, which is pretty much present according to regular law already, but also regarding hearings, transmitting hearings to TV, or at least to the internet public and so on. You will not be surprised that my advice, if I, if I, you are allowed to do, give advice to the European Court of Justice, I do not know whether I am allowed to do so, but at least you put forward public statements in specific cases, my point would be to caution against it, because it's something else whether you make open proceedings of international courts on the one, in which usually treat cases which are, not in theory, but in practice, have an ergo omniscience, and their publicity is much more important and justified, but to transfer this to individual cases before national courts is a problematic matter. So I would not advise the European Court of Justice to go down that, that road, and I think it's good to transfer some of the limitations introduced by, by Strasbourg also into the EU jurisprudence. Secondly, more important, does the new Twitter and Facebook world will force some changes? Secondly, more important, does the new Twitter and Facebook world will force some changes? My very personal view is yes. I always say to my colleagues, we will not be able to continue as we do when this twittering out of our proceedings is taking shape. And that's actually what happens in most, in the most important cases, we have twittering from Constitutional Court deliberations. And sometimes this leads to terrible mistakes. You may know that regarding the prohibition of a party, political parties, the National Democratic Party of Germany, as it is called, was first reported falsely by the media because they confused the position of the federal government with the pronouncement of the court. There you see that twittering is dangerous. But my point is probably we, at some point, we will be forced by an error of that kind to allowing at least our public proceedings to be much, to be available in transcript or maybe also orally at least, because at some point, there will be false twittering, fake news coming out of those public hearings. And you can counter fake news not only by rectification, rarely by rectification of your press office, but only by full record. If you give them, it's true, the reality was, the hearing was otherwise, then process. So my hunch is we will be forced to become more open. But my fear is that that will open up things, to personalize things even more, and that has certain dangers for courts in the future. So we must be careful that the good things which transparency and publicness are, the inherent positive as thing which open justice is, cannot go all the way. So maybe that is something which the public itself has to take care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all these comments. Before giving back the floor to the initial speaker and the other commentator to comment upon the comments and maybe answer, I would like also to raise some questions, because I had the feeling at some point that there was a kind, not confusion, but maybe a mix between the necessity of having an oral part in proceedings and whether this oral part should be made public or whether we can have perfect proceedings without an oral part. Because I have the feeling sometimes that we might mix the arguments and say, okay, the judicial proceedings could be perfect or perfected without this oral part, because it adds nothing to the quality of our knowledge of the case. But knowing whether this oral part, if it is necessary, should be made public is a slightly different question. And also, at the beginning of your speech, Andreas, you mentioned that on your point of view, that there might be a difference between international Constitutional Courts and regular courts. I think that maybe the sanction a bit more refined than this, because, but I would be happy to have your comments on this. It might not be true for all international courts, I don't know. But nevertheless, it's related to the nature of the task. And if I understand well, as long as the task is abstract in its aim, it could be made public easily, whereas for the rest, it's not the case. But when you have this kind of abstract approach to a case which is not related to an individual, do you need this, the oral part, or can you skip it, because all can be made in written? So these are just questions among others, but I would be happy that you take the floor to comment on the comments, maybe Mr. Spuna.
Thank you very much. I will try to be brief, so we can also have questions from the audience. The first issue, which is whether international courts and Constitutional Courts should be treated differently. My answer would be that we must be very careful and analyze each procedure, because I mean, for example, the Court of Justice is deciding in different procedures. We have preliminary rulings, the direct actions, opinions. So each procedure should be analyzed differently. My personal opinion is that maybe in general, we could say that international courts or Supreme Courts, Supreme jurisdictions of member states should be treated differently in the sense that they more often are more often dealing with the issues on the point of law. So they do not establish facts. And I think that it is framed within this exception of the Court of, of the European Court of Human Rights. And my last comment to Judge Paulus, Andreas Paulus. Yes, I was hesitating whether I should mention this in my introductory speech, but I also have some reservations regarding TV and live streaming of procedure. Of course, it concerns only a very tiny minority of cases, because as far as the Court of Justice is concerned, I would say ninety-nine percent of our hearings are extremely boring and no one would be ever interested. But there are hearings which are very sensitive. And just to give you an example, I have the problem that if we have a TV or live streaming of the hearing, the parties are not so much pleading to the court, but rather to the general public, especially in the era of Twitter, Facebook, you can immediately gather information what's going on in the courtroom. And what happened recently in the Court of Justice, we also, if there is a huge interest in a case, we have a special courtroom where journalists can sit and observe the hearing. And one of the journalists recorded the hearing and put it online, the part of the hearing online, even, and so it was accessible even before the hearing was finished. And that created a pressure in a certain, in one of the member states to challenge a judge, to recuse, since it was presented in such a way that one of the judges of the European Court of Justice was biased. So I would say that this online streaming means, first of all, that the parties are not pleading to the court, but consider the hearing as a show to the external world. And secondly, some judicial decisions would be very much influenced by the need of the external public and not for the sake of the proper functioning of the procedure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. If I can just take up on that, we don't have online streaming. So our judgments are recorded. Usually, they start at nine and we put them online at two thirty, so in the afternoon or in the next morning, if they are in the afternoon. So we have the possibility to correct, to cut out something if there is some need, and of course, not before it's finished. And the problem of being a show, we have a very, as you say, very boring. I think in casual way, it's much more lively. So we have, no, really, it's, we have a very strict part, one and the other one speaking, and then our questions, which are short and in one part of the hearing, and then we have the answers. It's all, it's not going back and forth, it's not, it's not really a Saturday night entertainment for the people. But that's probably why it's not so controversial for us at least. Then I wanted to take up on what Andrea said about personalization. Yes, I think justice should not be personalized, but on the other hand, I think we cannot avoid it. I give you an example. We had a judgment this week published in Lithuania, a Lithuanian judgment against Lithuania. It was about advertisement using Oh Mary and Oh Jesus. So a man who was tattooed and half naked, and then the subscription was Oh Jesus and something for some advertisement. And the same with a lady and Oh Mary. And then it was prohibited by the Lithuanian courts. And our court said seven to zero that it was violation of Article 10. So this judgment was published, there was no hearing, so the judges could not be seen. There was no dissenting opinion, there was one concurring, one short concurring. But the very same day or the next day, for example, in Italy, I don't know in the other countries, there was a huge press campaign directed against the judges sitting on this and saying, well, this judge coming from there and there has this and that opinion. So the personalization of justice, as long as our names are written on the judgment, is always difficult to escape, even if we are not visible. This danger is there. And the last, I think that's a very important question for us, in how far are we different from national courts and international courts? And I agree with you, we have to look at the specific procedure, there is no general answer. I can give an answer for my court, I can try to give an answer for my court. The Strasbourg Court is meant to be open for everybody, every individual in Europe, eight hundred million people have the door open to come to us, that the idea. And when we started to get this huge burden of too many cases, there was a very intense discussion of selecting, of picking and choosing, like the Supreme Court in the United States, just to take out the important cases. And there was, at least among the judges, we said, no, that's our very function, we are here for everybody, for the individual. That is the achievement of the court. But at the same time, I think for public hearings and for bringing out the controversy that are discussed to the European public, we have to select. I think there we have to select, there we have to take out some cases like about religious symbols or political freedom or something like that, which are really exemplary for the discussion. And there, we do have to make some selection, otherwise we could not function. But I would say, yes, everybody can come with all their little problems, but we have to see what has to be discussed in a wider context.
Well, thank you very much. Of course, I agree with this qualification, every proceeding is separate. All are exciting, but sometimes they are only exciting for specialists, let's say. Some tax proceedings, we had, also they are very important and very, very fascinating and of sorts. So actually, yes, the problem with public participation is limited to those cases, but those high-profile cases are of course defining moments for the court and for the public as well. And they are very important to us and to the perceptions of public. My argument was not one in favor of live streaming, I agree with everything you said. But my argument, well, I think my model is in that case, only for that, in that regard, the US Supreme Court, I think those transcripts are very useful for you, who are the expert public. And in addition, they set the record straight. But of course, you must see to it that the private parties are protected. But my argument was, at some point, we will need to do some sorts of transcript or transmission in the afternoon rather than morning with some possibilities of checking whether private interests are concerned, because in this world of fake news, you will, we need an answer to fake news of what happened in court in some respects. Of course, I must say, our court is very fortunate, we have a special press corps, very good journalists, so the reporting is in general very good. Mistakes are made everywhere, of course, but the reporting is very good. But this kind of expert press reports is something which is always an endangered species. And therefore, we also make a great effort of explaining better than in earlier times what we are doing. That is a danger. But usually, my view when I came to the court was, I should speak by my decisions and not by my person and not by trying to explain. But this kind of attitude actually is not accepted anymore. You have to do it, because otherwise, there is a danger of misunderstandings and misperceptions coming across very, much more than seems to be, have to be the case in earlier times. So actually, yes, maybe we have to do explanations, knowing very well that the better thing is with our decisions, need to speak for themselves, and we have to try to explain ourselves better in the decisions. I would completely agree on that.
Yeah, it could raise other questions. I will just mention the case of the French Constitutional Court. You have the secretary general writing an explanation of the decisions in the front page. And then you have people popping up and saying, is it for the court to explain and therefore comment its own decision, how it should be understood? So it can, I mean, trigger mixed feelings. But it's just another question. And I open the floor for comments and questions. Do not forget to give your name, please, so that for the, please.
I'm Sinisa Rodin of the Court of Justice. I have a few brief comments to very inspiring presentations that we've had. So my first comment is, where is the accent in this phrase, public hearing? Is it a public hearing or is it a hearing which, well, can be public or not? And I think that it makes difference as to a function, because everyone has a right to be heard, but whether this hearing will actually take form of written procedure or oral procedure, or whether this oral procedure will take place in public or in private, that's a separate question. Well, functions of all these forms are different. When we come to the public hearing, then of course, it has a legitimizing function. This is a broad term for a series of sub-phenomena, but let's call it legitimizing function. In other words, justice needs to be seen to be done. But why it needs to be seen to be done? Because we, I guess, that we want to create something that was once named by an author in another context, by collective cognitive imperative, imperative. So what is collective cognitive imperative? It is, it defines the whole phenomenon of adjudication, of bringing justice, and defines the roles which are being played in this game. Why is this important to my mind? Our civilization, for more than two thousand years, is a civilization of scripture, of a book. And our profession as lawyers and as judges continues on a long tradition of interpreting a text. It was originally a holy scripture of different religions, but in our case, it is the Constitution, it is a black letter law that we interpret. Now, something very dramatic is happening. This civilization of a book and of interpretation of a book is being jeopardized, is being jeopardized by emergence of new media, by emergence of internet. There's, by the way, an interesting book, an excellent book written in the seventies by Neil Postman, amusing ourselves to death, which speaks about influence of television and of electronic media, that was, by the way, in pre-internet era, but today it is all even more important. So our task as lawyers and judges is somehow to re-establish and reaffirm the supremacy of book and the supremacy of interpretation by a court as a legitimate method of establishing facts. Then, another comment on the role of a public hearing, some distinction has been made between national courts, ordinary courts and international and constitutional courts. So of course, the highest courts don't establish facts, they decide about law. And the question here is whether a public hearing is equally necessary in such circumstances as in the circumstances when the court has to establish facts. Well, I would say, I would say yes, because what's happening, at least at the Court of Justice, is that parties argue law. They have a legitimate claim that a legal rule should be interpreted in one way and not another. And they pose legal arguments and they argue them. They fight for their own interpretation of law, which they think should become universal. Of course, public hearings in this sense, in the sense of arguing law, are in short supply. This is not a rule, this is something that does not happen as of ordinary at the highest courts. Just look at national Supreme Courts, where the situation is similar, where law could be argued.
I'm afraid, I have the feeling that you're, for a commentary of twenty or thirty minutes, we don't have this time, please.
I'll finish very quickly. So, whoa, whoa, whoa. Well, this was actually, this was actually my last comment. So arguing law and arguing facts is not so essentially different. And well, this function of highest courts, where parties can argue law, is also essential for what I've been saying. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Rosenberg. I'm one of the, indeed...
I'm one of the endangered species that Judge Paulus referred to. I'm a journalist based in London. Can I just make a couple of quick comments on what was said? I'm very much in favor of what Judge Paulus said about courts explaining themselves. I don't expect judges to come forward and repeat what they've said in their judgments, but I do expect their courts to do a great deal to help the press to understand. The Strasbourg Court is excellent in terms of its press releases, it explains very much what goes on. The United Kingdom Supreme Court, there's a press officer who explains in detail what a judgment means when it's handed out to the press. And to take Judge Paulus's example of a case which was misreported on Twitter, I suspect that that may have been something to do with the way the court explained its judgment and the accessibility of the proceedings to the general press rather than the specialist press. And I wouldn't necessarily blame the journalists for that, I would ask the court, whether the court did enough. As for the questions of bias raised by Judge Nussberger and by Advocate General Spuna, again, I don't think you should be blaming the messenger, I think you should be looking at yourselves as courts. If a court is accused of bias because the same judge sits at first instance and on appeal from that same decision, you have to question whether that judge should sit on appeal from the same decision. You don't look at whether the first decision is biased, because whatever the first decision is, it's going to go one way or the other, and on appeal, somebody's going to say, I disagree with that decision. You have to think, should that judge sit a second time? And of course, in the case of the court here in Luxembourg, if you say that the press are not allowed to record the proceedings, and somebody breaks that rule, you're entitled to be cross, you're entitled to say that's contempt of court, in the sense that we use it in England. But the real answer is to make the proceedings public, albeit with a delay in the afternoon, like the Strasbourg Court does. Again, it's not the fact that the public is discovering that the judge has a particular view, that's what judges are there for, we're entitled to know. It's difficult enough to know what the Luxembourg judges think, because you all try to come up with a composite judgment, which is incomprehensible because it's forcing everybody into the same judgment. At least with Strasbourg, you can have dissenting opinions. So the answer is not to blame the media, but to explain more about what you do.
My intention was absolutely not to blame the media, and I would say, I very much appreciate the role of the media. I think that you perfectly write, Mr. Rosenberg, that courts should more often explain its decisions. The only problem with the today media is that only the first information counts. Those who present it as the first one always wins. And very often, legal analysis require, require much more thorough explanation. It's just like with books, you know? Sometimes if someone asks me whether you read this, whether you read this particular book, my answer is, no, but I read so many reviews that I do not need to read the book itself. So it's the same with the information about the judicial decisions, that we need the help of the media, but at the same time, I don't know, maybe it's also, it's the challenge for both of us, for the judiciary and for the media, that certain information requires more thorough analysis and more careful presentation. Thank you.
Just a concrete answer to what you said, the judge which sits two times, that's in the convention. I mean, we cannot escape to apply the rules that are in the convention, and we have only one judge, one national judge. Actually, in the convention, it's also written that the section presidents sit in the grand chamber, and they have been sitting in the chamber. We have a practice not to do so, because we see the problems, but it's in the convention, and we are applying, we have to apply it. Concerning the first intervention, just to summarize, it's what is sort of the added value of the oral discourse? I think it's just as what we do here. We could have our talks in written, in writing, you all read it, and you have one after the other, fine. What we do here is we exchange our views, it's more lively, we have the arguments, it's going back and forth. And that's the same what's happening in the court. And if you have only a written procedure, it's more like the result, coming to the result immediately, whereas when you have, when you participate in the oral hearing, you have the feeling of being integrated into the process of justice being made. And that's what, where I see the added value.
Well, very often, I think, oral hearings have results. I had a case in which the files said, the one party wanted from the other party some money for using its music. And in the proceedings, the other party said, but I offered you money. And then the original claimant party said, actually, somebody who has just won the Grammy, he said, I have enough money, interesting, you hear that rarely, but I don't want you to use my music. And actually, he lost the case before the Constitutional Court, because the new music was something else, it was hip hop made from an original song. So that, and to make, you must, that is something for the law of the authorship and so also, you also have the right that somebody else doesn't transform his or her product into something new. So that was a result. Maybe you get some money because you have used some original ideas of somebody else, but you cannot ask somebody else not to make something new out of it. That was the reasoning of the court. So that came out in the public hearing. It was not in the files. We had the benefit of the natural parties being there, which sometimes transforms the landscape, the legal landscape a lot. That gives you an impression that indeed oral hearings may change the outlook of the case. And at the same time, so they inform the court, and that's their main function, it's for getting a better result, more just judgment of the court. But at the same time, it also prepares the public for the arguments and for the problems in the case. So sometimes we have a public hearing also to make the complexity of the factual situation hurt to everybody. And there, the journalists of that press corps I talked about have a very important function indeed, because as we do not have live streaming, they explain to the public what happened. And they explain also what we couldn't explain, why it happened. And that is a very important function, and I must say, I'm very impressed of the press corps we have, and also of others writing, it's of course also public to non-members of that press corps what we are doing. So that is a very important function, and what we have to do is to try to make it better. We have press releases, we started five years ago or so, to have a press release in English. Also, we are a German court, accessible on our website, because we know what we are doing is not only for national consumption. But we do not have yet press releases in French, which would be very important to inform also some of our colleagues in Luxembourg of what we are doing. But that would probably be beyond our capacity. We try to become better in that regard all the time.
I guess English makes it for the court here at least. But it's also a vehicle for influence, so you have also something related to power behind all this. And also some cultural dimensions, because I found striking in the comment that you can have very different approaches to justice, whether you conceive the court as a body or as a bench. And there, I had the feeling that some remarks were very much backed by a vision of justice as a bench and not as a body. It can be in other legal cultures, you have different approaches to this. Don't know whether there are questions, there will be other opportunities for question or comments. So maybe not to have too much delay in our conference, I will stop the panel there, not without thanking very warmly our speakers for this very lively and very rich debate. Thank you very much.